Alright, everyone, we're just going to do a study session here. Um, I've been trying to get my tactics rating on Lee chess up to twenty-three hundred. Um, at twenty-two thirty right now, obviously, this doesn't mean anything, of course. Uh, it's just a tactics rating, but. Um, it just would be a nice round number to be able to get up to twenty-three hundred. I've been trying for a while. I think the closest I've gotten is twenty-two eighty or something like that. Um, so, let's see if we can accomplish that. Um, gonna do maybe about ten puzzles or so, depending on how long it takes. Go over some games that we played today, and then go from there, so. This isn't going to be the most interactive, um, session. Uh, but hopefully we can get some improvement here. Alright, so we got Queen B two. Alright, so Black takes a pawn here. Alright, so obviously we got check, uh, checks, captures, and major threats first, so. Uh, Rook F eight. King F eight. Queen check, let's say Queen F one. Can we go somewhere? Do we have anything here? Not sure yet after just a superficial analysis. Um. Rook takes, king takes, knight, E six, king somewhere. Do we have anything here? Not clear. Let's see, well, let's, let's back up a little bit and let's take an assessment of the position. Um, materials equal. Both kings, even though white's structure in front of his king is not the greatest, not seeing any. Direct mating threats yet on white's king, or really black's king for that matter. The pawn on D five does a good job blocking white's own bishop. Um. So maybe it's in different tactic, Queen takes queen, so let's, let's look at the captures, Queen takes queen, Knight takes. Alright, so we got a hanging knight. Uh, we can, you know, Rook B one, no, can't Rook, Rook B one without hanging the Rook. Queen takes queen. Rook takes Rook. Well, it does look like white could at least win a pawn here with. Rook, Rook takes Rook, King takes. Queen takes queen, Knight takes B two. Ninety-six. Uh, depending on which way the queen, the king goes, if the king goes towards the queen side, and we just take the pawn on G seven. If the king goes towards the king side, we go knight D eight. Pawn moves, and Knight B seven. Well, not so, it's not so simple. We got Rook takes Rook, King takes, Queen takes Queen, Knight B two, ninety-six, check. Let's say just like, King F seven, or King F seven doesn't work, because then we could. Knight D eight check, and then we take the pawn. Is it enough to win? Don't know, but it's something. Okay, maybe that's it. Let's double check. So Rook takes, King takes, Queen B two, Knight B two, ninety-six. F King F seven, Knight D eight check, and I take the pawn B seven. Let's say he just drops back to G eight, Knight D eight, pawn move. Knight B seven. Well, then he's got Knight C four. Well, then I got Bishop F one. Then he can just take on A three. Hmm. So let's look deeper. Alright, so obviously the queen is a little bit wobbly. So is the knight on D three, obviously our queen's undefended. Bishop on G six undefended, the pawn H five is a little bit wobbly. D six pawn is a little bit wobbly. Okay, I think I understand. So Rook takes Rook, King F eight, ninety-six, check. If he moves anywhere that's not protecting G seven, we just trade queens and take on G seven. And. If he. Moves back to G eight. We move Queen F one. With a pretty difficult attack to defend. Obviously, queen's coming to F eight, if he drops back the bishop to F seven to defend, we take on D three. But I'm wondering. If the minor piece endgame is really that bad for black. Cause I feel like he could just harass the H three pawn. So I think we should change the order. Rook takes F eight. King takes F eight, Queen F one, check. Then no matter where his king goes, we go Queen F one. Looked pretty hard, difficult task to. Oh, okay. So we got the first couple moves right. Got this move wrong here. It's interesting, cause I don't see, I guess maybe he can just run. And then I have to be careful of my king. Yeah, I guess if I can't get in there with a check, let's say if I move ninety-six, he just moves King B seven. Huh. What's the idea now? So they're vulnerable piece, piece on D three. Undefended piece on G six, we can on D seven. I don't know if ninety-four Bishop B four does much. Ah, Bishop B four does do something, it distracts the bishop from F seven. Then we have a nice mate, that's good. So anyway, you can save it. But you move the knight, we take the bishop, if he takes the bishop, we pay them. Ah, that's, that's, that's nice. That is nice. Tis nice. Now we have to worry about some perpetual rules. Take, 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 take. Oh, that's annoying. I got two. Yeah. Ah, now I gotta get out of checks, that's annoying. Alright, so take, check. Yeah, I think we, okay, that was good. Yeah, I think, even if he just goes here, I think we just move here. No more checks. Alright, cool. Alright, so. We went backwards on our first puzzle, but it was an interesting puzzle, so, that's good. Alright. This time, if I get it wrong, I'll try to review it, so I can further understand it. Alright, so we have last move, we have a fork, looks kinda dangerous. Alright, so the first things that are percolating in my mind are some back rank checkmates here on D eight. If only that pawn on E seven was moved up to E six, it would have some really hard, um. Attacks to, to, to defend. Alright, so we, let's assess this position real quick. Three minor pieces, three minor pieces, two rooks, two rooks, queen, queen. Um, and then we have five pawns to six pawns, so white is down a pawn. But, white has four active pieces versus black's two. And additional half-open file, and that king is looking very, very vulnerable. Uh, so let's see what we have here. Alright, so first we check the checks. Ah, so we already have something, so Rook. D eight, as crazy as that looks, I think might win the queen, so Rook D eight, Queen D eight, Bishop, B five. How do you block the check? You can't block it with anything else but the queen. Then you take the queen with the bishop. So that's a possibility. We change the order, I think he could just simply block with the bishop, take, take, with the knight. I don't see anything there. So I think we give up the Rook and Bishop for the queen. But, that's not that big of a material advantage, and we already are down a pawn, so is that the solution? So Rook B eight, Queen takes D eight, Bishop B five, check, no other way to block the check. Oh wait, duh, he can just block the check with the bishop. I'm having hallucinations here, guys. Yeah, I'm having hallucinations. See, this is why it's good to practice and calculate. I'm rusty. I'm having trouble calculating the simplest of lines. Interesting. So we may have a case of the, the pin is mightier than the sword here. So I'm, what I'm thinking about here is Bishop B five, check. Okay? So one, two, three. Yeah, Bishop B five, check. If he blocks with the knight, I think we just slow play it. Bring your knight out, and then bring a Rook to D one. And I'm not seeing how he can quickly, I'll have four pieces attacking and he only have three pieces defending, I'm not seeing how he can quickly. Get other pieces into the attack. And then if he Bishop B five, check, and he blocks with. The bishop on D seven, then we take, sorry, we. We take with the Rook. He blocks with the, the knight, then we slow play it again, Knight F three. Bring the other Rook over, and we're getting two pieces for the Rook, but is it enough? Let me look at some other captures, maybe I haven't looked at yet. Taking on H seven does nothing, taking on E seven. Does nothing. Threats, let's say, you always gotta look at crazy threats, even if they don't make any sense at first, Rook. D seven doesn't appear to do anything. Another thing I'm noticing is that the queen doesn't have a lot of escape squares to go to. So that could be something. Ah, Bishop F four. Should've looked at that sooner, because that's a threat. And it works with our idea of our back rank mix, so Bishop F four is probably the move. Bishop F four, E five, Bishop takes E five, Bishop D six. Well. Hmm, so. So Bishop F four, obviously he takes, we back rank made him. Bishop F four, E five. We take, and where's the move is queen? If he takes on C four, he's getting mated. If he moves to E seven. That just looks horrible too, maybe just check. Ah, just looks horrible. Alright, let's go with Bishop. Ah, it's not Bishop F four, that's no fun. That's no fun. That's no fun, maybe we. It's not Bishop F four. Wow, I'm just going backwards, guys. What is the defense of Bishop F four? E five takes Queen E seven. Maybe it's just Queen E seven, what do I have? Bishop C seven. Well, then I gotta worry about my back right. Queen comes down, then I have to drop back the queen, and I got nothing. Alright, well, let's go with our second idea. What was our second idea here? That's not right either. Alright, now I'm thoroughly confused. Hmm. For sure, it was Bishop, Bishop F four, but I don't know what the. Oh, I guess with Bishop F four, he can just take the Rook. And then when I take on C seven, then he takes back. Well, no, then he gets mated, right? No, he didn't. Hmm. I really wanna look at Bishop F four, but I gotta find the solution there. So I'm looking at Rook D eight. With the purpose of backwriting, writing checkmate, but I'm not pairing it with the idea that. The queen is, is vulnerable, since it's got one attacker and one defender. This distracts the defender. Also keeps the bishop pinned. Makes an additional pawn island, wins the pawn back. I think that was hard to see, because I was looking at it for one purpose, and I wasn't connecting it with the other purpose, that the queen is vulnerable, and I also. Wasn't calculating the checks, moves, and captures, and the variations, just on the board in front of me, so. But I wanna look at the Bishop F four move, see why it's not good. Come on, stop fish. Let's refresh. So let's, let's analyze this Bishop F four move. I wanna see. What's wrong with this Bishop F four move? Queen F four. What? Oh, it's check, ah, Queen F four, check, I'm thinking, he can't take Queen F four, cause we got mate. It's check. So I'm curious. After Queen F four, let's, let's pretend. There's no check here. Let's look at the second move, yes, all the other moves are just losing. But since it's check, alright, I think I just dropped the queen back. You guys must think I'm stupid, cause I am. Alright, wow, I gotta get back on track. You see how many greens I had in a row there for a while, and then red, green, red, and a couple green, and then a bunch of red, alright, gotta get back on track now. Focus, Terrence. Alright, he just dropped his bishop back. Alright, we got three, two on the king side, we got, uh, four, three on the queen side. Alright, any checks in the position, alright, we got F seven, check, takes with the king, then these, that looks like Bad News Bears. Uh, so F seven, King F seven. Sorry, C two, sorry. C two, Queen C two, uh, King C two. Queen takes B two. King B one. That's looks pretty bad. Queen B one, looks like checkmate. Rook. He can move, I guess he can move up, yeah, not checkmate quite yet. But it looks bad. Alright, cause he drops the Rook on, on H one. So obviously he wouldn't take with the king, he'd take with the queen. So obviously he wouldn't take with the king and take with the queen. At which point we probably would. Move knight before forking, but not really forking basically essentially winning. The rook because if he ever takes back, then we get the devastating attack with Queen takes B two, so that's probably so the solution. Let's see if we're missing anything. So what type of intermediate move would he have after C two check, Queen takes C two knight before? Maybe something like some despral like rook D six. But then most simply, we can just take and be up the exchange, actually, we are downing exchange right now. So that's important information that I need to consider. Well, in that case, Rook D six, we will just take some despral, any other moves? That I need to worry about any checks. Alright, what about so after knight before, what if he just moves? The queen, the A forward attack, the undefended rook, then we just made him. Use the bishop to attack anything, we just take the queen. Yeah, looks pretty sound. Just double check. The queen moves anywhere that's not attacking B two, we take it. But since it's also the only defender of the rook and the D three square, the queen recaptures on D three, it doesn't protect B two. Doesn't look very good for him. So the only thing that would work against this was if he can take. On C two with the king, so C two, King takes C two. Queen takes B two. King D one. Queen B one. King up, we take the rook in the corner. Looks pretty straightforward. Can he try to trap the queen with like, you know, like B three? Well, no, then we could just swing the queen back to the other side, alright, so this looks pretty straightforward. Yeah, we just take the rook there, cool. Heading in the right direction, guys, that was only a forward pointer, but we're heading in the right direction. Alright, so we got, alright, takes our queen. Alright, so we are down a queen. We are up a piece. Down a queen. Pawns are equal. Obvious move would be to take the queen back. Don't think we can get away with anything else. We take the queen back, aren't we just a piece up? We take the queen. I don't understand, aren't we just a piece up? No comprendo. We take the queen, we're just a piece up, right? What am I missing? He takes our piece. On D one, we take his piece on F six. He takes on G seven, we just take the piece, and we're two pieces up, and then he takes our piece back, and we're still one piece up. What am I missing? I mean, the only try he's got is bishop. Okay, that's interesting. But then, yeah. But then we just, yeah, so I was thinking what was interesting was. Bishop takes D one, Bishop D five, but then we just move the king to D seven. And even though we have um a piece on pre, he's got a piece on pre as well. He retreats his piece. We retreat our piece. I don't see what's wrong with that. So I'm gonna take the queen. Okay, sometimes it's just simple. Alright. Ninety-five. Let's assess the position. Two on two on the queen side, four on four on the king side. Okay, I think I see the solution already. But you gotta make sure. Yeah, I think I just, I was thinking take on D five immediately, but no, you trade rooks first, then take on D five. Then the rook is hanging. But does he have an intermediate move? No, we can just block on D one if he. So Rook takes C eight, Rook takes C eight, Rook D five, if he wants to be fancy, throw in a check, we throw back our. Um, Rook to defend, takes, takes, what has he got? Nothing. Is there anything else takes? Alright, if after I take the first work, does he got like anything like ninety-three? Just take it. He takes, we're up a piece. What? No, what am I missing? Is it just more accurate to? To throw in the check first? To ruin the pawn structure? Is that more accurate? Oh, I real, I didn't realize that it would just be even material if I did this, oh, you see? The things you gotta consider. I see, you gotta throw in the check first, I see, then draw in the check and then take. See, it's the details, guys, it's little details. Yeah, so I missed that after I take. My knight is under attack. And if I take, he takes, and then I've got nothing. But luckily I can check. If he moves back to the back rank, then I can take the check and then move my knight back. If he moves here, then I can check. Forcing him to move somewhere, at which point I then take the free rook. The termesos will be the death of me. Alright, so let's just do two more, cuz I'm hungry. Um, and yeah, let's just do a couple more, alright, so we got knight H five. Okay, let's assess the position, two minor pieces, two rooks and queen, two minor pieces, Rook and queen. White seems to be up an awful lot of pawns though. Two, four, six, seven, two, four, okay, so white is destroying in terms of material. But black has some. Tough things to meet. G three is under, uh is vulnerable to attackers, to defenders. And also that would leave H one very vulnerable. So this might just be a defensive tactic. But let's see, do we have any checks here? We don't have any checks. Black does have some checks. None of them look great. Captures. Black can take on G three, I take back, then bye-bye to my queen. White literally has no captures that he can do. Not even just no bad ones, I don't see any captures white can do at all. Alright. In terms of. Threats. Well, again, black has taking on G three. White maybe has F four, but then he can just snap the pawn off, but Knight takes F four. White actually has H four as well, but then G three falls. G four. But then we give away the F four square for the knight, that just looks bad. So many things are. Happening. So even though white, that's why this position is interesting, even though white is dominating in terms of material. It's not so simple, I'm wondering if it's just Queen G two, just defensive move, maybe there's something else. So I'm thinking about something like Queen G two, if he did Knight G three, it doesn't work because we just take with the queen. Queen takes, Queen takes, Rook down, King F two, Rook H two. King up. Well, maybe he's got something, maybe he can do like Rook B one. Or start Rook B two, nah, it looks like I have too many defenders, so that won't work with him. So after I move Queen G two, how does he proceed? Knight F four, then we just take. So Queen G two, Knight F four, takes, can we take on H two? Then I take the queen, check. Then he gets away. So that just won't. But he can easily just take, 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 check. Back, check, check, and I get away that way as well. Also ninety-two. Not only doesn't it attack, well, then we still have the pin. So yeah, I think it's just Queen G, G two, that's what I'm leaning towards. Yeah, there we go. Alright, one more. Maybe I can get it slightly higher than where I started, I think it started at twenty twenty or something. Alright. Got Rook over, two rooks, two rooks, one bishop, one bishop, two pawns, four pawns. So white, in terms of material, it's losing, pretty serious threat on G four that black has. I think I do like. I do like Rook C seven. That's very interesting, Rook C seven. Rook takes G four. King H two. Rook takes F four. Rook takes E seven. Rook F two. King H three. Let's say Rook F four, King H five, four, sorry. Rook H three, say Rook H three, King H four. Rook F four, King H five. Bishop F three doesn't look good. Also, Rook C seven, Rook takes G four. King H. Two. Rook takes F four, Rook takes E seven. Rook F two, check. We gotta go to King H three. Which he can. Check on F three, can go back to H two. Like F two. So maybe you can just meet Rook C seven by just simply taking on H six. Well, no, cuz then I get Rook C seven, check, mate, check, not do that. So as long as there's a Rook on G eight, Rook C seven, not only threatens the queen, but threatens mate on H seven. But have this annoying mating or perpetual net that black has. So Rook C seven, Rook takes G four. King H two. Rook takes F four, Rook takes D seven, Rook F two, check. King H three. Rook H four, King H five. Or sorry, King H three, Rook F three, King H four, Rook F four, King H five. Bishop down to F three, check. Then King takes H six, if he takes my rook, then I made him. That looks good. So Rook C seven, Rook takes G four, King H two, Rook F four, Rook B seven. Rook F two, essentially running away from the checks until we can mate him. Well, why couldn't he just block? He could just block, right? He can just block. Well, if he blocks, then he loses the bishop for free. No, he doesn't, he takes the bishop. No, yeah, exactly Bishop. Well, actually, since the Rooks are disjointed. Alright, let me look at another move first. We clearly have a big problem with Rook G four. Even if we move our King, it's dropping, we have Rooks coming down, uh, we got, we got problems. So we have to do something aggressive. I wanna make Rook C seven work, but I can't see how to make it work. Is there something else? Actually, I was thinking he would just be able to take on G four no matter what, but his H six pawn is. It's hanging with devastating attack, so if I just move my King out of the way. Then I can take on H six, if he ever moves, takes on G four, and I still have the Rook C seven check. Or um, attack. So let's say I move King H two, what if he just moves? Yep, Rook back. Or let's say Rook G seven. Rook A to G seven. So King F two, Rook A to G seven, Rook C seven. Queen takes C seven, Queen takes C seven, Rook takes C seven, nothing. So essentially, the Rook on G five is pinned if he's not giving a check on G four. My brain hurts, guys. Trying to get better at chess. Trying to think. If I slow play it, what's my threat though? What's my unavoidable threat? I don't see it. Alright, so I'm thinking now, I'm picking now between Bishop F five and Bishop E four. What that does is it Bishop F five, sorry, protects the pawn on G five. It also makes Rook D seven possible, that looks pretty hard to defend. Get all the checks covered. Rook D seven would attack the Bishop. Will attack the Queen, that make threat. Alright, so let's say Bishop F five, let's say Rook G seven, Queen D seven. Let's say Queen back somewhere. Other Rook up, let's say that. Exchange Rooks. Yeah, he's got the problem with H six still as well. So Bishop F five, Rook G seven, Rook D seven, would have to go with something like Queen F eight. At which point. I would trade Rooks. Maybe check with the Queen. Go Rook D seven. Takes with the Rook. Queen H six, game over. Let's say he moves a Queen, where's the, where's the most productive place to move the Queen? Let's say he moves the Queen to. A three, I don't, that's not really productive, but. Bring the Rook down anyways. Yeah, I think it's just Bishop F five. The other line I was looking at was something like this. And then just like this. It's just, once you take away the threat of taking on G five and. Protect the past pawn, which protects a Rook lift, which threatens, there's too many threats, Black can't defend. Oh, I see, the proper defenses, Bishop C eight. Then you take on G four. Then you're just gonna exchange that, but still enough to win. Cool. Well, that's enough for me, guys. Thanks for watching. Uh. I'm at twenty-two nineteen now. I think I've regressed. But uh, I'll be back with another study session soon. Have a good day.